Furniture Depot in Geouin. We've been here in Geouin for 10 years, serving the needs of families like yours with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Geouin and Fayette. So come see me.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Geouin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
I'm Rick Chandler with Marion County Funeral Home and Spry Memorial Chapel in Russellville, Alabama. This is Dwayne Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Geouin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Hey guys, this is Nick Jackson at New Heights Church in Hamilton, Alabama. I just wanted to extend to you an invitation to come check out one of our services. We start at 11:00 a.m. on Sunday mornings and 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday night. We're all about abiding, arming, and awakening. Also, we have a nursery ministry and a children's ministry as well as functional on those Sundays. Our youth gather together on Wednesdays. Come on out and see what it's all about. We'd love to have you.
Hamilton Metal Roofing located at 291 County Highway 25 in Hamilton. We sell 29 and 26 gauge roof metal. We have all types of trim and screws for you to complete your projects. Call us with any questions, open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Call us at (205) 921-7100.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career check and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Hello, my name's Vince Hughes. I'm the owner and pharmacist at Hackleburg Pharmacy in Hackleburg, Alabama. We're located here on Highway 43 here at Hackleburg Pharmacy. We have state-of-the-art technology to ensure accuracy and efficiency to effectively help us provide you, the patient, with the best pharmacy services available. We carry a variety of products from a full line of vitamins to knives and knife sharpeners. We're open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. until 5:30. Phone number is (205) 935-3392. We'd love to be part of your healthcare team.
Father, we come to you today with thankful hearts for your many blessings for another day of life you've given us. And Father, as we enter in this business today, Father, we pray that things that we say and do has been accordance to your will and decisions made is be what's best for our constituents of Marion County. Father, forgive us for what we failed you for, so in thy name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank all y'all for being here. Can we, will we, and this should let them go first?
Yes, sir.
Be with C-3 or Jamie?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Jamie, we're gonna be the Kith Resolution verse.
You've already, yeah, you might have to. So you've already given them the resolution, Scott?
They have.
Have a copy of it? Okay, because I've got some if I need to.
Just the chairman has a copy right now.
Oh, okay.
Well, this resolution is, as Mr. Waz Miller has spoken with us about, with Kith Furniture and Bear Creek, when they had the tornado damage, they're seeking to rebuild and extend their existing planned facility. And so they requested a 10-year tax abatement for the improvements that they're making. Their taxes will stay as it's been. We're not reducing their taxes, but it will stay as it's been. It's just on the improvements that they'll make. We're gonna abate those taxes. But what we're actually doing is deferring to the town of Bear Creek and follow along with whatever the town of Bear Creek does with regard to this particular tax abatement. So if Bear Creek decides that they want to go ahead and do this tax abatement on these improvements, then we'll join in with that. And that's what the resolution says.
So to understand this better, Scott, I guess the simplest thing to say is it all stays the same, like they've been paying a certain amount of taxes per year that still comes to the county? The only thing, if the improvement in the taxes and the revenue is more, it stays the same for this for 10 years?
That's correct. That's it.
Now, I talked with Mr. Craig Smith, the owner, Friday. He called me and they're, they've got buildings older. Actually, he told me he had one building on hold for a week because they were behind with some electrical work that had to be moved. So they're, they're coming back bigger, bigger and better.
Okay. Well, I guess the next thing is to...
We need a motion to accept.
I need a motion to accept this resolution. I make a motion.
Second.
Very seconded, all in favor?
I'm gonna throw these out at you. Maybe if you guys can possibly join us, but I mean, I appreciate your light. As we said, we would love to have you, so just let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda, we go back to start, is the EMA APB presentation, app presentation. Who, is Eric gonna take this?
I'll tell you just a little bit about it before these guys stand up and tell you about their product. So I met these guys down at our association meeting and talked to them a little bit, looked at their product. I think it'd be a good thing for the EMA to have this app. The sheriff and I have talked about splitting it to where we can do like a public safety app, basically have, he'll have a portion in it and we'll have a portion in it. Blake and I kind of handed it off to Blake. He and I talked a lot about this may lead into something that we can eliminate hyper reach and just use the app instead of having the hyper reach phone call system and the app because once people download the app, then they'll receive notifications on their cell phone. Blake's done a little bit of research to see how many landlines we've actually got signed up on hyper reach. I think it's a very, very small percentage of our... So this may be something that we can actually save money by using this app. So I think it'd be a good thing. I let them talk to you a little bit about it and then if the sheriff's got anything to add on it too. But I appreciate you considering buying the app for us.
Good morning. I'm Jay Baxter and actually the company is OCV LLC and we represent public, we develop public safety mobile applications. We've been doing this for about 15 years. We're an Alabama-based company out of Opelika. Gosh, in Alabama, you know, we probably have 80-plus custom apps throughout the country, 700, 800 custom apps. We've been doing this for a while, but just to be respectful of your time, so, you know, we have a lot of different brands. If it's the SheriffApp.com or MyEMAApp.com or the GovApp.com and we find different ways of putting the information, public safety information into a mobile app, not only because to you, for the public to be able to access it, get to it, but to your agencies to be able to push stuff out. No different, I know Eric was mentioning the hyper reach or your mass notification system. So all our stuff's integrated, like with the National Weather Service, you know, typically you're gonna get your notifications quicker on a smartphone, on a, through an app. If it's automated tornado warnings, whatever that is, or any other message that you push out, it's gonna come quicker on your phone. But it's also gonna give the ability to do things that you can't do with your current system, like submit damage reports or have shelters that you can click on and give you directions right to it. On the EMA side, I mean, there's all, and just traffic information, just extra value there. But then you go to the sheriff's side where there's like, because everyone, someone's on here and it says submit a tip, people do things on their smartphone that they wouldn't necessarily log in or make a phone call on, or their inmate roster, or the registered sex offenders. We have all these partnerships that make this all happen automatically, so it leverages staff time. They do less, you get better information, and you can engage the public more with where they're at. I don't think I find anyone in here that doesn't have a smartphone. Is that fair to say? It's changed, it's just changed. I mean, especially since COVID, right? It's a different world and this is how people prefer to get their information and it gives you the opportunity to push stuff out and be in front of it. And even if it's information that may or may not be emergency related, but it could be the things that benefit the county just to be in the know about, and it's something that grows throughout the life of the app, it just changes. Gosh, I'm trying to think, someone near you. Culver County has done this public safety model, Lawrence County's done the public safety model. It tends to be, some of your counties are more rural where it benefits the agency and the county to partner with each other and it benefits the community, if that makes sense. I could just ramble on forever and that's not what you want, so questions about it?
I'll jump in there just a second.
Yeah.
And so when we first started talking to them, Blake went on and downloaded the Culver County app. Is that right, Blake? Culver County?
Yeah, I downloaded Fayette County and Culver Counties.
So like he mentioned with the hyper reach program, the other night we had some severe customers come in. Blake was receiving the alerts from the app before we got the phone calls and it was...
Yeah, I mean, I was on the phone, you said, so it's a difference.
Several minutes earlier, he actually got the notifications from the Culver County app, or maybe it was the Fayette County app. So the app would actually help notify people even quicker. And like he said, with the different benefits of having the maps and stuff like that. I know y'all are doing the website, the County Life website. This would just be another way to help us move our county forward in that area, to have more technology and more things out there for our citizens to receive information. Like he said, if we're on a scene, just say we're on a wreck, we can pull their app up and we can put that information in. Maybe we've got a road closed, maybe we've got something like that going on. We can, we can do that on the app and it will hit all of our social media sites, it'll hit everything, and notify everybody that's got the app pretty much immediately.
And I did mention there's some other benefits where you can have like private channels if you want to notify your different first responders. Doesn't have to go to all the general public, but it helps you sort of leverage that communication.
We mentioned that too with speaking with Kalen about it, that we can set it up where everybody, all of our county employees downloads that app. If we have something that has to be pushed out to all county employees, we can push it out through the app. If it's something about the courthouse, we'll push that out through that app. And everybody's got that, the app on their phone, they'll receive a notification.
And I do think there's one last piece to this that's really important that we've found out over the years of doing this. We create like digital marketing programs to help you put this information out to the public so you get the downloads, because in this product, you'd see the analytics of how many people have downloaded. You remain anonymous, but what features are getting used, how often they're getting used, what's being in service. But the marketing side of it, you know, we provide all the material, so if you want to promote it on social media, you want to have a dropdown on the county commission's website, and vice versa. I mean, you can help promote each other on that, but that's a big piece that makes this successful, in my opinion.
So our intent would be, if y'all allow us to go forward with the app, on the website, there'll be a tab for EMA, but it'll basically just be a, they call it splash page, a landing page, just something that's got our basic information, contact information, address, all that kind of stuff, and then point everybody to the app. So that'll be our main way to put information out or receive information will be the app. We'll have a place on the website, but our app will be most of our business. Can't think of anything else that we've discussed about it. The money. Ballpark?
Ballpark, so year one, like 13.5, and annual after year one, because of what we're doing is we're taking away one of the platform fees. Normally it's about 19, 20. So year one's 13.5 and the annual on it is 74.59, or 74.50, 75, I think we'll call it. That's what would be.
So the sheriff and I talked about, he would split that with the EMA. Then of course, y'all know that we're reimbursed 50% from the state on EMBG, so it would cost us roughly a quarter of that that we wouldn't be reimbursed for, that you guys would have to cover.
It's about, what, 1,800 bucks, 1,800?
That's the month I did this, the one for 1,800 dollars.
That's if you kept your hyper reach, right?
So that's our, our other intent would be to look at this and look at their analytics and see how many people we're reaching and hopefully in the future. So like, like I was mentioning about how many landlines we have on hyper reach. If everybody that's signed up for hyper reach is signing up with their cell phone, then we can reach those same people with this app and give them more information.
And I will say this about the landlines, the landlines do have the majority of member businesses, where we've signed up a business landline, the person has their phone in their pocket because they're signed up and their business is signed up. It's a very, very, very small number of landlines that's actually on hyper reach. Most everybody's, most everybody's not even seeing phone calls, they won't text messages so their phone ain't ringing 15 times. So I believe the push alerts will do better because I was receiving faster and more. We had excessive feed warnings, we're having more again. Hyper reach is not pushing out the excessive feed warnings.
And I suppose, and we've got hyper reach set that way, I suppose we could, we could set the app the same way where you only get certain...
Right, right. Full control over that. But I think it's fair to say you would have more capabilities with the app? And I, I used to be in the mass identification world with school gas and all that stuff, so I think it's a pretty good evaluation that it's going sort of from a, sort of a one-trick pony to a lot of different options that can just give you more bang for your buck.
I get the EMA part of it where it's gonna reach out to more people and probably faster and stuff. And then the people can come and click onto that app and see what's going on in that area, right?
Absolutely. Like the sheriff's inmate roster...
That's what I was fixing to ask, what all would it help on yours, Kevin?
About the same, what you're talking about.
Same deal?
Yes, and you know, I think it's a no-brainer in my opinion. Sure, I'm looking to do it, a lot of sheriffs are doing it. Social media is where we're at today, you know, that everybody, like you said earlier, has cell phones, iPhones. What I like about it, you can push out information quickly. I agree with the hyper reach, I get them on my phone and they're always delayed, basically by the time the warnings or something happens. On the sheriff's side of things, I think it's a great thing.
Another thing, I don't...
Quicker.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I told them the damage reports, some of y'all have been out with me after a storm or whatever, trying to find the damage, trying to, and we always miss somebody, there's always somebody that, you know, we didn't see that or whatever. So with their app, individuals could go in and submit a damage report, they could submit damage reports for their homes or roads or whatever, pick up y'all too. So we know exactly where to go. Those people are giving us the answers to the test instead of us trying to go out there and just find it. The citizens could report the damages to us. I could relay that on to y'all, on to Chris, and we'd be able to find our damaged areas quicker probably without having to wait on a phone call or wait for somebody just to find that, that damage.
And, um, just to tell us the sheriff something, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but submit a tip portion of it, y'all can make it to us, send it to certain schools, right? You know, like schools...
So that's like another feature that you can make it for like your schools if you wanted to submit a tip for all your SROs and then you can make it right so that Joe Citizen pulls it up, hits schools, sees a dropdown list of all the schools in Marion County, and then if I, let's say, Hamilton or whatever slapped, then I want a tip to go to that SRO as well as that principal, as well as the sheriff's office, I could do that. There's a, again, there's a lot of capabilities in there. No different than your registered sex offenders. We have a partnership with the estate company Offender Watch, who does that. That happens automatically. Right now, someone's having to do that manually currently, is that fair to say?
Yes.
That happens automatically, accurate, maps it, whatever, just another way of being in service on the sheriff's side.
What we're gonna have to do is push it, advertise that everybody gets, downloads the app. We gotta advertise, that's gonna take a little while for people to get used to it. But once they get used to it, and they get on their phone, just like you get an app for anything.
Right.
Right. People downloading all kinds of apps, we just gotta push it publicly. This is available now for our county.
And there's a lot of ways to lean into that. Lean into the school system, lean into the different local government outlets and utilizing social media. And it's sort of fun because you can, say fun because you can see the analytics, you know how many downloads you're getting and you know what you're doing's working and what's not working and we just have a lot of fun leaning in with the agencies to get the numbers and results they want.
Another thing about these guys, they're an Alabama company.
Yeah.
They're located in Opelika, in Opelika.
Even though we're in Auburn.
Yes.
Yeah, there's two others that are Alabama, one that go there, and the rest are Auburn too.
But I think hyper reach is New York?
Buffalo, yeah, yeah, New York, yeah.
We'll be doing business with a local company.
What about the timing, if the commission decides to go forward, how soon?
Good question, I agree with the question, yeah. So it typically takes, typically takes us about eight weeks to build it. It's really, really us sitting down, getting known what features are in there, getting that content, and then it's, takes us about eight weeks in there to build it, roll it out, create your marketing kits. We do a couple different marketing kits that just come along with it. We train you, we're with you, we go, I mean, we're with you to the life of the app. We go from a dating phase to married, so we're there if it's, you know, two years or 20, well, that's the game plan.
Another good thing about it, everything is done in-house in Opelika. We don't outsource anything. So everything's done, the service, they build the app, and we maintain the app all in Opelika.
It's a fun story. We've been a company about, we started out about two and a half people, now we're a company of about 80 people. It's just, it's a great Alabama tech story that a lot of people don't know about.
Any more questions? Can I take a vote on it?
I would appreciate it, I would consider letting us do it.
I need a motion to accept this.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I made a motion. Need a second?
Second.
I made a second, all in favor?
Thank y'all.
Motion granted. Thank you. Next on it is the Kimball Midwest. They're not here. That's what I was looking for, that's Daniel, isn't it?
Yeah, they're not here, so just...
All right, so next thing, I think this is Chris's, garbage truck purchase.
Yes, sir. We had an opportunity to buy a garbage truck, there's one that's already been fabricated and it's ready to roll out, so have one in the budget to buy anyway. And so if this one's available immediately, instead of having to wait 18 months for one to be built and shipped to, so I'm just asking to allow us to go ahead and purchase this. We're gonna pay about a third down and finance the rest over four years.
I'll ask a question if nobody else knows. Did you check on the rate, financing rate on it and how long it would be?
Yeah, I did.
Get some quotes?
Yes, so the total purchase price of the truck would be $204,551. If we put $68,000 down and finance the remainder, they'll finance it for 5.9% over four years fixed. And certainly if interest rates were to go down, we could refinance it later if that were in our favor.
Did, did you put this out to others or just?
I did not. So if you want to take the time to ask all the banks, I only asked First National Bank what their rate would be.
What we need this guy.
It's always good to check and see what rates we get.
Do you say?
It's always good to check, see what rate we get.
Was that for five year, four year?
Four years.
Four year?
Uh, yeah, if, if we don't uh, tell them today that we're purchasing it, they may lose out on this particular truck.
Uh, can we go ahead and vote to purchase it and, and reach out to other bank, I mean, check around for better financing?
Yes, we just won't be able to actually get the loan until y'all vote to enter into a loan agreement with the bank. So be that after the next meeting when we can actually secure the financing, but we can, we can promise it today.
Okay.
Can, can we?
We could go ahead, we could go ahead and vote to accept and give you the authority to do that and then we can check between now and the next meeting on the rates. And if nobody beats this rate, we'll go with this rate. That'd be the way to do that. Okay. Made a motion.
I'll make a motion to buy the truck.
Tim made a motion to buy the truck, need a second.
A second.
Tim a second, all in favor? If they didn't tell me, I'll take it. And Kayla, you can get with the other banks and check with their rates and go from there on out. Okay, uh, legislature committee appointment for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-four. I think Kenneth has been part of the last year.
Yes, sir.
Tim was the year before. Uh, we talked about this. Greg's not here, I think, due to illness, but uh, we kind of discussed this last time, I believe when we left it up between Larry and Greg, which one of them wanted to do it. Larry, you, you have any say on it?
I don't, don't mind, it's whatever.
Greg was, Greg was interested, I, I'm not trying to knock Larry out, but.
That's fine with me.
It don't, it doesn't matter to me, I just need somebody to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to point Greg.
He's not here, he got it.
I'll make a motion to point Greg.
Tim made a motion for Greg, I need a second.
Yeah.
Larry, second, all in favor? Greg, Montgomery for a few trips. Uh, the next thing is District Three land purchase, and I think that is Greg's. Uh, I think I talked to a murder, Kayla, you may know more about her, Scott, but I think it's some land that joins his shop or something where he's trying to add on or something.
Yes, sir. Uh, he's going to ultimately buy three acres, uh, the property next to him there on Chalk Mountain Road, uh, for twelve-nine, and we just need to go ahead and approve that.
Twelve-nine?
Yes, sir.
Three acres?
Yes, sir. And that's from a Billy Berry.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to give Greg the authority to go ahead and purchase this three acres.
I'll make it a motion.
Tim made a motion, I need a second.
A second.
Tim a second, all in favor? Uh, next thing is to award a Dozier bid for District Five. I guess Larry's.
Yes.
Larry, you want to tell us what it is or the public or whatever?
It is a Caterpillar D six E Dozier, uh, purchasing from West Alabama Ready Mix, uh, for the sum of forty-eight thousand dollars.
And that was the only bid on the tractor two, isn't it?
Yes.
Larry?
I need a motion to award this bid.
I'll make it a motion.
Tim made a motion, need a second.
All second.
Larry, second, all in favor? Okay, now, next thing, and I think this is Greg's too, is to change the date on a public hearing for Mitchell Road.
Yes, sir. We uh, we had said that last week, but um, that's when, the week of the conference, uh, the ACCA conference, so we've moved that date to September eleventh.
Larry made a motion to accept that date, I'll need a second.
A second.
Tim, second, all in favor? Okay, uh, next thing is to set the county manager's salary, the new county manager, administrator, count slash manager, whatever we're going to call Scott. Uh, I'll let Kayla handle that, I guess.
Uh, the commission has agreed to pay Scott ninety thousand dollars annually for his role as county administrator and attorney combined.
Okay. Everybody in favor? Well, I need a motion to accept that.
Would you explain for the public's benefit that this is actually not costing no more than it was?
Yes, so the commission took what we are paying annually in attorney fees to Hunt's law firm and what we're paying annually for a county administrator, and that sum was eighty-seven thousand and some change, those two numbers combined. And so ninety thousand is very close to the amount that we were already paying out. So this costs the county very little in addition to what we were already paying for those two roles.
Thank you.
I need a motion to accept this.
I'll make it a motion.
Tim made a motion, need a second.
A second.
Tim a second, all in favor? Okay. Next thing is need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it a motion.
Tim made a motion, need a second.
A second.
Hello, my name's Vince Hughes. I'm the owner and pharmacist at Hackleburg Pharmacy in Hackleburg, Alabama. We're located here on Highway forty-three. Here at Hackleburg Pharmacy, we have state-of-the-art technology to ensure accuracy and efficiency to effectively help us provide you, the patient, with the best pharmacy services available. We carry a variety of products from a full line of vitamins to knives and knife sharpeners. We open Monday through Friday, eight AM until five-thirty. Phone number is two oh five, nine three five, three three nine two. We'd love to be part of your healthcare team.
This is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Gewin. We've been here in Gewin for ten years, serving the needs of families like yours with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, um, million-dollar rustic. We have stores in Gewin and Fayette. So come see me.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Gewin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at two oh five, four six eight, four six two five.
Uh, I'm Rick Chandler with Marion County Funeral Home and Stry Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in two thousand and two, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and curative of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Gewin to Soligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five, nine two one, six seven, one two.
Hey guys, this is Nick Jackson at New Heights Church in Hamilton, Alabama. I just wanted to extend to you an invitation to come check out one of our services. We start at eleven AM on Sunday mornings and seven PM on Wednesday night. We're all about abiding, arming, and awakening. Also, we have a nursery ministry and a children's ministry as well as functional on those Sundays. Our youth gather together on Wednesdays. Come on out and see what it's all about. We'd love to have you.
Hamilton Metal Roofing located at two ninety-one County Highway twenty-five in Hamilton. We sell twenty-nine and twenty-six gauge roof metal. We have all types of trim and screws for you to complete your projects. Call us with any questions, open Monday through Friday, seven AM to four PM. Call us at two oh five, nine two one, seven one, zero zero.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career check and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.